Great. Morning, council members, state policymakers and team members, and members of the public. I'd like to call the November fourteenth meeting of the Social Equity Council to order. It is now ten oh two AM. At this point, I will call the role, Councilwoman Alvario. Councilman Betts.
Present.
I am here. Councilman Gaddis. I know you're here. Councilwoman Gordon. Councilman Jefferson.
Here.
Councilman Abercrombie. Councilman Abercrombie? Okay, I see him. Councilwoman Name. Councilman Pelka.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. Councilwoman Shaw. Councilman Shirley.
Here, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Valaries.
Good morning, here.
Good morning, Councilman Walton.
Present.
I see Councilwoman Gordon has joined us. Am I missing anyone else? Nope. Okay, good. We have a quorum. Thank you. This morning, the council will hear from Oakstirdam University, which will provide an overview of the Accelerator Program. We'll also be asked to vote on the recommendations from Cohen Resnick regarding seven applications for reconsideration and two applications that were mandated to us by the Superior Court. Finally, we will vote on two workforce development plans and hear from Councilman Gaddis, who chairs the Cannabis Business Social Equity Loan Fund, which will provide resource support to confirm social equity applicants. For scheduling purposes, we will hear from Dale Sky Jones from Oakstirdam, and then we'll go into executive session to discuss pending litigation. So at this point, I will hand it over to Dale. I do believe Councilwoman Shaw has joined us. Just wanted to make note of that. Dale, yours.
Thank you so much. And if you would be so kind as to ensure that Natalie Darvis has screen share capability. It's great to see everyone. It's been a minute, and we have been hard at work on, well, both getting to completion of the contract, of course, and figuring out the best way to deliver the social equity program. And this afternoon, we do have scheduled our first listening session. And so we wanted to just give you a brief overview today of the planning and the schedule, what the program is. And so Natalie, when you are ready, we can see your screen, although not on slide one.
Yes, give me just one second. Got to set up my screen share properly. All right. Going to slide one. Good morning, everybody. Confirming we are on slide one.
Actually, it's narrow. I don't know if it is that way for anyone else. Like, I can only see.
We cannot see your slide.
Okay, there we go.
Good. Okay. All right. Good morning, everybody. My name is Natalie Darvis. I'm the Chair of Business at Oakstirdam University, and we're excited to be presenting an overview of the Accelerator Program. So the overarching goals of the Accelerator are for participants to learn the business of cannabis, to be able to craft a viable and executable business plan, and to find funding opportunities for participants so they can launch their businesses. We have a Folsom Coalition to provide all these services. Oakstirdam University will be the prime vendor executing this accelerator, and they will be generating the curriculum. Reset will be our on-the-ground Connecticut-based community partner, also hosting in-person events, providing local SMEs and support along the way to develop this accelerator and make sure that it has Folsom community impact. The International Cannabis Bar Association will be providing expert legal support and assistant curriculum review for the Accelerator. The Minority Cannabis Business Association will also be assisting with networking events for Accelerator participants, as well as providing SMEs for our mini presentations throughout this program. Arcview Group will be delivering expert financial advising assistance and working in tandem with Cougar Acres Consulting to help develop the curriculum that underscores this accelerator. So now let's explore the program a little bit. The first phase of the Accelerator will be to learn more about the cannabis industry and discuss the challenges of building a new adult-use supply chain in Connecticut. And starting next month, we're going to have a series of three webinars led by leading cannabis industry experts from Oakstirdam University, as well as experienced operators from licensed cannabis businesses. During these webinars, we will discuss what it is that makes the cannabis industry so unique compared to other industries. And in our experience, even entrepreneurs of vast experience in other sectors can easily underestimate the challenges of starting and running a cannabis business. So this webinar series is meant to help all the participants better understand why that is and what specific challenges they might come across, depending on the type of license that they're pursuing. During this time, coaches from the Accelerator Coalition will be reaching out to each participant individually to ask them to complete an assessment of where they're at in their business planning process. And this is going to help us tailor our support offerings for the whole entrepreneurship coaching program, which is coming up next in the Accelerator, and I'll explain that in just a minute. So the goal of the assessment will be to group participants and cohorts who are pursuing the same type of license and who are about at the same stage in their progress toward final licensure. And this assessment will also be used as a benchmark to make loans available to participants from the state. So once everybody has finished our Business of Cannabis program, done the assessment, had our webinars, and everyone now has a solid foundation in cannabis knowledge, we're going to shift our focus towards crafting a viable business plan starting in March of 2023. During this phase of the program, we're going to have a coaching program that is designed to walk participants through the process of writing a fully-formed business plan that will include a mission statement, an overview of their business model, an analysis of the industry and the competitive landscape in which they're offering or operating, a marketing strategy, a financial strategy, among many other topics. And the final plan will also include an action plan for completing key milestones that might also revolve around licensure. So everyone participating in the Accelerator will be assigned to a small group. We like to call these cohorts, based on where they're at in their process of crafting and executing their business plan and what type of license they're applying for. Each group will be assigned a coach who has experience planning and launching a cannabis business. And while this coaching program is underway, we will also be hosting some in-person workshops at Reset's location in Hartford. And during these events, all the groups will come together to learn skills that will help them tackle common challenges to starting up a cannabis business, such as drafting legal agreements, finding a suitable location, performing market research, researching compliance requirements, and building a team, among many topics. So once participants have a business plan that's completed or extremely close to being completed, we're going to launch the fundraising phase of the Accelerator Program in June of 2023. During this, we're going to be hosting a series of webinars that's going to help participants learn some key concepts about cannabis business finance and get acquainted with funding sources and the fundraising lifecycle. Participants will also get advice on developing and refining their pitch to potential investors from the cannabis investment experts at Arcview Consulting. Then, as these webinars draw to a close, Arcview's consultants will provide direct support with creating a pro forma to each accelerator participant. The participants who have a fully-formed business plan, a pitch deck, and a pro forma ready at the end of the program are going to have the opportunity to present their plan to investors during a live pitch day event that we're going to have in August. There will also be some other forms of assistance that will be available throughout the course of the entire Accelerator Program. For example, the Accelerator Coalition will be hosting in-person networking events to help every participant build connections with one another with industry and community leaders, service providers, and potential funders. And each event will include facilitated introductions and presentations from industry experts, licensed business operators, service providers, and regulators. INCBA is also going to connect participants with a network of licensed attorneys that can provide pro- and low-bono services to social equity operators. And they will also provide training for attorneys that offer legal services through the state and local aid organizations, which will create even more opportunities for equity businesses to access low- and no-cost advice. So that is a brief overview of our Accelerator Program, and we're happy to field any questions, and thank you so much for having us here this morning.
Thank you so much, Natalie. Questions from council members? And if I.
Yes, this is Ed. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. I'm just going to ask, because since the screen is up, if you can, going forward, if folks can just raise their hand, because otherwise I won't know.
Sure.
No, no worries. No, that's fine. Thank you, Councilman Shirley.
So first question is, how long is the program? And when is it considered completed for an applicant?
So the program starts in December with our webinar series and culminates with the Pitch Day event towards the end of August. So it's about eight months in length.
Okay, and finally, the investors that you solicit for to hear the pitches, that is the assumption that they will, I guess, identify interested companies at that point?
Yes, so the goal with the investor pitch day is to provide a first-of-its-kind offering in a social equity program. We're really excited about this. Arcview is going to be selecting from their vast network and working with Reset, who also is in contact with local Connecticut investors as well, to vet investors to come and review these pitches from the participants, and then they'll be able to, if they want to move forward with funding the operation, be able to, you know, have a structured relationship. So we can't guarantee everyone's going to receive funding, but every single participant who makes it through the whole program has all their deliverables completed, will be able to participate in the pitch event.
Right, I just wanted to make sure we're not saying that on Pitch Day, there'll be commitments made by investors.
Yeah, no.
We can guarantee that.
Yeah.
We'll strongly encourage it, however, and make sure everyone is not only set up for success, but that we have qualified investors in front of them that are intentional about why they're there. This is not just an exercise. This is the real thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gordon?
Hi, good morning, everyone. I'm just following up on that with the Pitch Day. That's not the only, is that the only interaction that the businesses are going to have with investors through the Accelerator Program? Or is there separate interactions that will happen? I mean, I'm just thinking, like, what if someone has a bad Pitch Day? Are there different other opportunities through the Accelerator?
I'm so glad you, I'm so glad you asked that. Yes. Well, first and foremost, we're trying to do several community events, and this is, you know, part of the intention is, is, you know, to get to know one another, be exposed to one another, that it's not your first time. We, Arcview, just had an event very recently, and they have several more events planned themselves during the course of this. And so they and MCBA, who also occasionally hold pitch events, as well as a third organization that we work with, you may be familiar with it, Marijuana Unpacked. They also have extended the offer to allow anyone that, again, has reached the milestones that have their pro forma and pitch pulled together to come pitch at his event. So he's already committed to ensure saving space for any of our individuals that want to pitch in Las Vegas next spring. And so there's, we're going to try to expose these participants, especially the ones that are ready early, to accelerate where they are and get them in front of as many investors as possible. What we're doing with this is guaranteeing that this event is going to happen through our coalition, but it's certainly not the end-all-be-all. In fact, we're continuing to look for additional events to expose investors to these businesses and vice versa.
I would only add to that briefly. Good morning, everyone. It's so good to see you all again. Just that I think along the way, the coaching provided throughout the entire program, as well as the Arcview connections, and, you know, those that are participating in that pro forma development, all of that, will also really go towards helping them build those relationships. So even if Pitch Day isn't the be-all, end-all, that they have other relationships that they've built, that will also kind of open those doors.
Terrific. Thank you. Additional questions? If not, Dale, Sarah, Natalie, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Thank you, everyone.
Look forward to working together.
Yes, I'm excited to begin. May we continue to listen?
Of course.
Okay, thank you. Did you have a follow-up question, Councilperson Gordon, or? It might have been the old hand. Okay, thank you.
Alrighty. So at this point, as I mentioned, we'll be going into executive session, so I will entertain a motion to do that, to enter into executive session.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Great. We appreciate your patience. Council members, you should have received a separate link or a separate invite to enter an executive session, and I will see you on the other side. Thank you, Crystal. At this time, I will entertain a motion to accept Cohen Resnick's recommendation of the following six applications: ACDS 0000801, ACFB 0001230, ACPM 0000701, ACRE 0011824, ACTP 0000303, and AMHF 0004030. Meet the ownership and control criteria based on the review of resubmitted and updated ownership and control documents.
So moved.
Second. Great. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great, thank you. Moving on to item number six on the agenda, may I have a motion to accept Cohen Resnick's recommendation to approve social equity status for ACCE 000013 to Hartford Cannabis Company and ACCE 000021 to the Goods THC, thereby reversing the July 12th denial decision. The Social Equity Council will issue updated ADRs to the two applicants and refer them to DCP for provisional licensing procedure if approved.
So moved.
Great. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. And may I have a motion to accept Cohen Resnick's recommendation to approve workforce development plans, MMDF 000003 and MMDF 0000066 for meeting the criteria established by the council.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
Yes, any discussion?
So we're just, we're basically stating that Curaleve and the other company meet the criteria.
This is an approval of their workforce development plan. So they've submitted as part of their application, their conversion, they have to submit a workforce development plan. So we are saying that we are approving that workforce development plan for conversion.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Gordon?
Is this where we ask questions about the workforce development plan, or is that in a separate?
About the, well, this is the motion, we're considering the motion to approve these two workforce development plans.
Okay, so I've got some questions. Are we in the discussion section? Sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so I guess maybe my questions are to Councilwoman Valaries. It seems, so let me just, I think I should preface my comment. It it probably is helpful to get a little bit of a better understanding of what the goals are here, because the plans seem very fluffy, and there's not a lot of details. I think, like, historically, if we think about workforce development plans and, like, where we are as a state, there's a lot left to be desired, specifically when doing outreach to communities of color. So, for example, one of them, the, it's broken in, like, women and people of color are said to be a certain percentage, but it doesn't break it out to say what percentage of their employees are women and what percentage of their employees are people of color. I think the other application does that, but I am, like, what I'm struggling to understand is where is the intentional outreach in these applications to ensure that, like, we are doing what's necessary to break cycles of generational poverty that's connected to the disproportionate impact from the war on drugs? So it seems like a very, like, we're just going to do outreach to the community, we're going to do this. Like, historically, those things and those processes have chronically failed our communities. That's why Connecticut has a large number of jobs that are not failed. There's a large number of jobs, like, specifically, that's connected to communities of color that it just seems like it's not, for me, it's totally missing the mark. And I'm not sure if you might be able to provide a little bit better of an overview about how these plans presented and how they showed that they were going to be very intentional with connecting to those most harmed by the war on drugs. I don't see that from the documents we have, and I'm pretty, I'm just trying to get a better understanding of how they said they were going to do that, so I could decide if I'm going to support these plans or not.
Yeah, thank you for that question, Councilwoman Gordon. You know, the workforce plans were not intended to disqualify someone for the licensing process. We set up a rubric with some specific categories that we wanted people to address. We understand that these plans are introductory plans. They do need more support and more detail. One of the goals and necessities of the council is to have a full-time workforce development program manager who is supporting the businesses in the more detailed development and implementation of their plans, and also to be working on the outreach to connect the jobs and opportunities for training to those disproportionately impacted communities. Our office, the Office of Workforce Strategy, has been working very mindfully around how we reach those populations through a DEI and a committee that has over seventy community-based organizations, supporting kind of the work that we're doing on outreach. Some of these programs that we've been working on will be launched in the next several weeks. But we do need the resources to be brought on in order to really fully be able to support these organizations. So we're saying that this is really getting them thinking about what their plan is, but they're not at a point where they can really provide a very detailed understanding of what it is they're going to be doing and the fact that programs aren't out there existing to help with the development of skills for people into these programs. But we will be working with them on a concerted effort to support their outreach to those communities and developing their workforce plans in a more robust way.
So I will beg to differ on that. If you ask me how I was going to do outreach to communities of color for a cannabis industry, I could give you thirty different things that I would think would be innovative for how to do that. So I feel like it's not, like, this is a plan for you to be ambitious, to tell us how you are going to accomplish this goal. And there's two things I feel like we, as a council, that's really important. You don't, personally, I don't think an organization or a company deserves to be licensed, deserves to be licensed in Connecticut. If you can't tell us how you're going to be directly connected to the communities that need it the most, and you don't have a plan to address social equity, so I feel like these are, like, the reason why these two things exist, which is the workforce development plan, and I think the other social equity plan that we'll be thinking, that the council will be talking about, is to create checks and balances. We have already created a space where there's a $3 million buy-in. There is, like, it's very, I don't want to say skewed towards individuals with lots of resources, but the least you can do is prove to us that you are able to figure out how to recruit people from communities of color. Think about creating programs that are connected to high schools that are thinking about the business aspect of this. How do you, like, if you want to work in a certain industry that's connected to cannabis, what are you going to do to create, whether it's accelerator programs, whether it's doing specific outreach? Like, so for me, I think that these were created as a way to create guardrails, not as a rubber stamp to be like, okay, you've gone through the rest of the process, now we're just going to let you go through because you created a workforce development plan that doesn't meet the criteria of the community's needs. So I think this is a very, very, very important issue. And if this is where somebody stalls on their licensing process, this is where they stall on their licensing process. I am just worried that we're going to say it is not important to a person who's going to get a cannabis license that they figure out how to do the workforce development piece that's connected to communities of color. I don't need to relay with a point, but I'm very disappointed with these two plans, so I cannot support them today because I feel like it does not meet the criteria to change cycles of generational poverty for my community.
So, and thank you for that, Councilwoman Gordon. I do just want to, I guess, state for the record that we did develop criteria and the Workforce Committee did develop a rubric. Based on that rubric and the metrics associated with it, these plans did pass. So I put that out there because, you know, we just came out of executive session. I'm thinking about challenges from a litigation perspective. We can always go back and look at the, at the rubric and the way that things are calculated if there is a, if there is a will among this council to do that. But I just want to state for the record that they did, in fact, pass the criteria and the metrics that were published and approved on and voted on by this council. Councilwoman Shaw?
Sorry, could I just respond before? I'm not saying that they didn't pass them. I was fine with the rubric. I just think that maybe I wouldn't have scored them as high as they were scored on that rubric based on the info. And as I'm saying, I don't have all the information, but the way it presents, it's not clear to me that they met the marks that I, and probably I would have scored it differently because of my jaded view of what I think about workforce development and, like, what's really important here. So I'm not saying the rubric is the problem. What I'm saying is, I'm not convinced that they presented in a way that I would have approved based on the rubric. So that's probably my point. I'm not, I think I agreed with the rubric. I think it's a really good rubric. I just think if you present and say eighty percent of your workers are women and people of color, like, that could mean seventy-five percent of your workers are women and five percent are women, are people of color, and that wasn't clear to me. So maybe it's just that, maybe how the information was presented, how it's broken down. I just think I'm personally not convinced, and that doesn't mean anybody else need to agree with me. I just think I'm just not convinced here.
Councilwoman Shaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this question is directed to either you or Councilwoman Valaries, or anyone who could answer it. It's more of a procedural question about this council's role with respect to approving workforce development plans. Councilwoman Valaries made reference to these plans not being a disqualifier, if I got that correctly. I understood that approval of the workforce development plans was a requirement for licensing. So I, and I understand that, as with the underlying criteria for social equity applicants, this council approved criteria that was evaluated to Cohen Resnick. We basically delegated that and then acted upon the recommendations. Is there a parallel process for evaluating the sufficiency of workforce development plans? In other words, have we delegated the final decision on the actual plans, whether or not they have met the criteria? And this really gets at Councilwoman Subera's point about, oh, Gordon's point, sorry, about, you know, proving criteria is one thing, but whether the plans sufficiently meet those criteria is another. So I'm just trying to understand the council's role with respect to final approval of the specific plans.
Sure, so the council is responsible for developing the criteria and then approving workforce development plans on the basis of that criteria. The criteria and the rubric was developed with the Workforce Committee. And the rubric and the plan, the rubric and the requirements and the criteria were voted on by this council. So this is the plan that we would, that we would vote on that allows them to proceed. I don't want to speak for Councilwoman Valaries, but I believe what she was saying was that there is, there, we always have the opportunity, just like we do with legislative recommendations. we always have the opportunity, just like we do with legislative recommendations or, you know, anything else to go back and re-review to take a look at, do we need to strengthen, um, those requirements or those criteria for future plans going forward. But this would be the one vote on the workforce development plan for these two applicants.
And just to follow up, if what, if there was a vote against these particular plans, does that mean that the licensing is on hold?
If the, if the plan is not approved, then that plan would have to be resubmitted.
And the licensing would be on hold until approval of the plan?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay. Hearing, hearing none. I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you. At this point, I will turn it over to Councilman Gaddis, who is Chair of the Cannabis A C C Loan Fund, for an overview of that program. Good morning.
Good morning. I was hoping this workforce discussion went on a little bit longer. Nobody likes to talk. So real quick, we we met twice and we had a couple of emails and here we are. I would publicly like to thank the good professionals at D E C D for all their hard work. They made this really, really, really easy. It was almost like walking into a turnkey situation. We basically operated within the framework of three things. Number one, we wanted to provide a competitive interest rate in a loan program. Number two, we wanted to safeguard public resources. And number three, we really wanted to be sensitive to the overall mission of our council, which is to address the disparities of those who are were disproportionately impacted. So with that, we came up with an interest rate of a floor of six percent to nine percent. If you participate in the accelerator program, you may be eligible for a one and a half percent reduction. Uh, if you were to borrow the half a million dollars, which you could borrow up to half a million dollars, that one and a half percent reduction is very significant. We were trying to find a way of feeding the accelerator program without making it mandatory. You know, oftentimes in state government, this is just not Connecticut, but in other states, sometimes you you throw speed bumps in a way. And we are really trying to build an ecosystem where all parties thrive. The last thing we wanna do is throw impediments in a way. So we did not mandate that you have to participate in the accelerator program. But we kinda dare, uh, dangle the carrot out in front of folks who wanna participate in a program, they could get a one point five percent reduction. We also, and and the reason why I'm staying in the interest rate loan, because when it comes to money, people get a little crazy. Uh, and rightfully so, money's very important. So I wanted to really slow walk this piece. When we looked at the interest rate, we talked about pegging it to the prime rate. Uh, right now, as I speak to you, I think the prime rate is seven percent. Um, it was seven percent a couple of weeks ago. The Fed funds rate is about four percent. The difference is the Fed's funds rate is what banks charge each other to borrow from each other. The prime rate is what you would charge your best ideal credit to borrow. So if you have a eight fifty credit score, which is the highest credit score, you could get three hundred to the lowest. And you pay all your bills on time, you would be considered a rock star ideal credit. Um, so the prime rate is for those folks who pay the bills on time and who are trustworthy. So we didn't think pegging it to the prime rate made sense because lately it's been so volatile. And quite frankly, these funds were bonded out. And we also looked at pegging it to what Connecticut pays for the bonds. Now, at the end of the day, we didn't wanna make any work harder. And we didn't wanna make it harder for anyone doing this work. So we looked at a very simple arrangement. Six percent minimum, nine percent maximum. If you go through the accelerated program, you get one and a half percent shaved off. So that's where we are with the interest rates. Uh, eligible uses for the loan would be P P and E, property, plant and equipment. So that is broken out into various categories, vehicles, leasehold improvements, some environmental issues. Now, let's stop right there. When I saw environmental issues, I was like, oh my God, are we gonna be digging out oil tanks, et cetera? No. Uh, if you have someone who gets one of these old mill buildings, let's say in Waterbury, Bristol, or, uh, New Britain, if you will, th- there may be some environmental issues, small environmental issues. And some of this money could be used to address those issues. So we're not looking at doing phase two, phase one studies and going, uh, deep like with the environmentals. Uh, some of the things you cannot use the money for is rent, child support, of course, illegal activities. You cannot use loan proceeds to cut and paste your business from Stanford to Waterbury. We, we don't wanna have this competitive environment where municipalities and towns are competing with each other. Um, we're, we're all on the same team here. And really, to be very candid with you, those are the real sticking points of this loan program. Some of this materials is was sent out ahead of time. I'm not the type of person that's gonna sit here and read to you. You guys are very intelligent. If you have any questions, I will be happy to answer them. Madam Chairwoman, I wanna thank you for your leadership and for having faith in me.
And I thank you so much for the the time and attention that you, that you put into developing this. I I read through it. I think it's I think it's fantastic. Wanna double click on your, on your, your props to the team at D E C D. I think they did a fantastic job as well. So, um, I am going to ask for a motion, and if there are questions, we can always address those during the discussion phase. So may I have a motion to accept the ad hoc committee's recommendation to approve the cannabis business loan fund as presented? Discussion? Oh, yes, discussion. Um, Councilwoman Shaw?
Thank you, and thank you, Councilman Gaddis. Could you just briefly comment on the, uh, process for um, uh, coming up with these terms and process, or any other state loan programs, similar programs used as a model? Just a little bit about the methodology for how, uh, this, uh, framework was established.
That's a very good question. So there, there's many moving parts when it comes to loans and underwriting. And and this, what this exercise was for is to give us some scaffolding. The folks at D E C D have been in this business for a very long time now. Particularly, they hone their skills when Jody Rell was governor. She actually had kind of the first s- small business express program. And Governor Malloy kinda reiterated that, or there was another iteration to that. Wh- where I'm going with this is when it comes to the underwriting, the guidelines, the credit, the background checks, making sure you pay your taxes, making sure you fit the the type of avatar we would like to see from reasonable credits. D E C D is, is, you know, they have a framework that works. We didn't wanna invent, reinvent the wheel. They will be servicing the loans. So D E C D is gonna do the heavy lift with the underwriting. However, if there are capacity issues, and for whatever reason, the good folks there, um, cannot do this, there is an ability to go out and look at a third party to help us out. So we're, we're very fluid. Our ability to to move, expand and contract is not arrested. But for the most part, uh, Councilwoman Shaw, this is something D E C does every single day with the various programs that they run. So we were like, you know what? Hey, why don't should we figure out another burger recipe? You got a good tasty burger. We're gonna use your burger. So that's basically what we did, kinda like a life hack shortcut.
Good to know. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Gordon?
Hi, everyone. Um, really, I really liked this, uh, this program. It seemed like it was it was well put together. I just had a quick question, given, um, maybe this is more of a D E C D question. I, I really like using the existing, existing pro, existing programs and not reinventing the wheel. Are there guardrails built into existing programs to address, you know, the system, the systemic inequity around credit and access to credit? Um, I assume there are probably different products during D C, D E C D, but like for individuals who, for example, have been incarcerated and probably don't have really good credit. I totally get that this is risk averse. You don't need, you're not gonna lend a certain amount of money to people who have a bad uh, payment histories or anything like that. Or are there programs within D E C D that are specifically geared towards those individuals that might just not have great credit or have been incarcerated for, say, twenty years, are returning citizens and, um, are, would like to be a part of the accelerator or any other program like that. It'd like, it'd just be helpful for us to understand what currently exists and how this program itself can kind of, uh, help out those individuals. I think that would be good to know.
Councilwoman Gordon, that is a very good question, and that goes back to our tenant number three of why we were having these discussions. We were always being reminded, particularly by Councilman Jefferson, that we, we do have an overreach and mandate to address those that were disproportionately impacted. So i- i- it's a given in what we were doing, that we were gonna make sure that those, those credit avatars that I spoke about earlier. Listen, we, we all know what types of folks we're gonna get. We don't really need to articulate that here. We're, we're gonna have folks with sub seven hundred credit scores. We're gonna have folks who didn't pay medical bills. We're gonna have folks who maybe went through a bad divorce and they have funky things in their credit report. The folks at D E C D, believe it or not, there, there's no one better, more sensitive to that situation than those folks. Especially dealing with the type of credits they see on the express, express program. So I am very confident that they will be able to handle these folks in a way that is very dignified and fair. Uh, and and remember, this program is set up and and it's, 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 it's a tough needle to kinda thread. But we're set up to give folks a nice cash infusion, protect public resources. And at the same time, help those equity joint venture folks who who may have a little rough areas with the credit situation. Um, and that's something the folks at D E C D will work out as they're going through each individual credit. But what we won't do is start hammering and turning people back. We're, we're not Bank of America. We, we kinda know the folks we're gonna be dealing with, and this particular program is built just for those folks. And we don't want them to bounce around other programs to help them out. Everything they need is kinda one-stop shop right here. People get frustrated when you start bouncing them around. So we're, we're trying to be like a survival knife here.
Thank you, Councilman Gaddis. Councilwoman Shaw, could you? Okay.
Yes, I do have a, a follow-up question if I might. And this goes to the spirit, I think, of the last question. I, I think because there is a kind of public mission, uh, behind the, the cannabis program more broadly, and specifically, uh, ensuring that social equity applicants succeed. I think that there is an expectation that, um, the, the loan, the lending standards would be a little bit different than if this were a private sector lending context. Specifically, I think there's this expectation that we're incubating some of these applicants, that there's a, a little bit of a subsidy, really, if you will. Um, I'm not sure if, and I don't wanna put D E C D on the spot, but it, I, I just not sure if there is an expectation that perhaps this, that, that there's a, a more formal kind of approach to devising these credit criteria, which may be different than the private lending context. I don't know if that's, uh, articulated in specific terms. But, um, I do think that there is a public mission behind the, this effort, which would suggest that the standards are, are different, uh, for the lending, if I'm not mistaken.
Councilwoman Shaw, I, I will attest that these lending standards are very, very different than what you would find at the Bank of America, J P Morgan. Uh, if you walk into any of those bank with a six eighty-five credit score, you, you have a, a very, very, you're gonna have a very tough time getting finances. Um, at the end of the day, we, we know what we're doing and we know the people we're serving. And this program is, is very, I don't wanna say lenient, but we take into the consideration all those things that you touched upon. For instance, I'll give you a perfect example. I actually think the interest rate is, is a little bit too generous. And, and while I shouldn't say this publicly, and some of, I'm like, look, we're not gonna make this program, uh, uh, many reparations. We're not gonna do that. But what we will do is make sure our equity joint ventures and our applicants who need capital have somewhere to go. Cause remember, the overall theme of our work is to make sure they have a bucket of money to go tap into. They cannot walk into Bank of America right now and get a loan. So that was really our number one mission, is giving them an outlet to be able to finance their operations. And I think we have achieved that. When it comes with dealing with folks who may need some more financial literacy, financial wellness, folks who may not be as savvy with their finances as you and I, we, we, this, this program and the folks at D E C D and everyone in- involved, um, that's what we're here for. Now, to your point, did we wanna specify or carve out something or give something some, a, a, a name that's sexy and shiny? It was talked about, and it was talked about at length. What we decided was in the best interest of being fast and proficient was to, to, to not box us in. You know, the folks at D E C D and us, the Social Equity Council, we fully understand what we have to do. So it's understood. It's one of those things, Councilwoman Shaw, it's inherent. Everything that you said is the fabric of what we're doing, and that's kinda driving us. So it's a given. It's a given. It's a given that we're gonna be a little lax with our underwriting with a lot of these folks. It's, it's a given that you're gonna have folks who get five hundred thousand dollars, who probably shouldn't get ten thousand dollars. But we're gonna help them. We're gonna help them. And that's why the accelerator program's important. That's why it's very important to build out this ecosystem. And I gotta tell you, I don't think anyone on this call is trying to reach for perfect. We're trying to get to a good place, see how the marketplace responds, then we iterate, and then we iterate some more until we get better. But I think that the product that D E C D, Jenny and her staff and everyone on this call was helpful and bringing forward. I think this is a good, decent start that we could build on.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Gaddis. Um, I don't see any additional hands. Um, oh, sorry, Councilman Abercrombie.
Oh, that's all right. Yeah, I, just quickly, I just wanna thank, uh, Subcommittee Chair Gaddis for kinda leading this effort. Um, him and, uh, uh, Executive Director, Jenny Ray Clay, um, did a great job here. And then obviously, I wanna shout out our D E C D staff who have a lot of experience, as, uh, Chairman Gaddis said, uh, with, uh, loans and through the Small Business Express Program. So, um, they were instrumental in this. Um, and then lastly, the, the legislature for having the foresight to include this funding. Um, you know, access to capital is absolutely critical, particularly with the, the federal government, um, not, not allowing, you know, federally chartered banks to, to provide loans to cannabis businesses. So, um, you know, this is, uh, critical, and I'm just looking forward to, uh, getting this program up and running and getting the money on the streets. So, thanks, everyone.
Thank you so much. Um, and I couldn't agree more. Again, Councilman Gaddis, thank you for, for chairing this. To the committee members, um, Councilman Shirley, um, Commissioner Layman, Councilman Jefferson, Councilwoman Name, um, and definitely to the, to the D E C D team, uh, Callis Andrews, Lee Roy Smith, Sheila Hummel, um, and to the S E, and to the S E C team as well, um, Director Clay and, and all of the staff there. This took a lot of work. Um, I think the, the end result is going to be transformative for our social equity applicants. So, um, all my gratitude for, for putting this together. And with that, I hear, if I don't see any more hands, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great. Thank you so much. Um, lastly, is there anything for the good of the order?
Yeah, I have just one thing, just a word of encouragement, Madam Chair. Thank you for your leadership. And I think we've turned the corner. I think the, the, uh, Social Equity Council is is achieving our mission slowly, but we're getting there. And, um, this was a very encouraging meeting. Um, the, uh, loan program, the accelerator program, uh, I think it's, it's something that, um, it's, it's encouraging just to, to, to know that we're making some real progress to help the people. Um, you know, who we supposed to help. And I just wanna thank the entire council for their efforts. This is a very ambitious effort, uh, on the part of the state. And I, I gotta tell you, the, the, the number of meetings, the sheer of meetings that we have is, is incredible. And, and, and people of, of meetings that we have is, is incredible. And, and, and people take the time and, and, and do their part. And I, I think we should all be, um, you know, satisfied and excited about where we're heading. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jefferson, and thank you to every single council member. Um, I, I appreciate you all more than I probably tell you. Um, but your passion and your commitment um shows every single day. So, um, thank you. And if there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second.
Right. Have a lovely rest of your day, everyone. Bye-bye.
Thanks, everyone.
See you all.